Go ahead and call this meeting the Cartersville City Council order. If you'll please stand with me, we'll have an invocation from Councilman Tonsmire, followed by the pledge from Ms. Tate.
Let us pray. Gracious God of all, we give thanks for the gift that you bestowed upon us and enjoyed by those who share in the life of this community. And granted in caring for one another and listening, we will seek God's will and purpose for the well-being of all citizens. In this, we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who's killing the roll, please?
Kerry Hodge, Ward 1, here. Jay Step, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsmire, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsey McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lori Pritt, Ward 6.
Thank you, Connie. First item is the approval of our council meeting minutes from May 17th. Council, you have had these well in advance of tonight. Chair will entertain any additions, edits, corrections, or motions.
Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved unanimously. We have a second reading of case SU-12-02. Mr. Menino.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you had noted, this is a second reading for a special use permit for the forever blessed Church of God. Initially, Planning Commission has recommended approval on this request with the condition as recommended by the Fire Department.
No changes since the last time?
No changes since the first reading.
Everything appears to be in order from the city standpoint?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Randy at this point? I will open up a public hearing for case 12-02. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing relative to SU-12-02. And the chair will entertain any further discussion, question, comments, or motions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have, the next item is an appointment to the Alcohol Control Board. If you'll recall, at our last meeting, we appointed Rick Naps to the chairman's position, taking the place of Jack Reeves, whose time on the board had, his term was up and he wished to go off of that board. You have before you in your, that was handed out to you by the clerk prior to the meeting, application for membership by, for Dan Heilman, who wishes to serve on the Alcohol Control Board. He has submitted for your approval, if you so choose to do so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Going to go back and thank you, Sam, for the recommendation. The, what's that? David, thank you for telling Sam to tell me.
Well, I just woke up and heard y'all, heard y'all vote.
Well, I'm sorry that our voting interrupted you and Jason's conversation. First, with everybody? Okay. We're going to skip to the, if you don't mind, the resolution for municipal court prosecuting attorney, item E1 on your agenda, please.
Okay.
That is on page 33, Sam.
This is pursuant to a new House bill, 352, that requires the council to designate who the prosecuting attorney is. Recommendation of the Judge Chief of Police, Deb B. Kewlaw. And that's recommended for your approval.
Okay. Any discussion? And if there is none, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Do you think that?
Mr. Archer, you have the next item of a quick claim deed.
Yeah, this is an area out on Old Mill Road, down by Renaissance Bank property that originally had a sewer line in it, and the city got a sewer easement for that line. And that sewer has been redesigned, relocated. The easement now has no sewer in it. Renaissance would like to have the property back. I would recommend we allow them, then let them have it back. And that quick claim be, deed executed to get the property back to Renaissance Bank.
Okay. Did we purchase that easement?
I don't know.
Do you know it?
Probably not. It was a very old sewer.
Okay.
You know, most often when property is developed, we require the developer to give us an easement. And that, if I'm not mistaken, that particular line was not a through line. It was just to serve whatever was there.
No, it actually did pick up the sewer that went across the road, the fluid drive that they put over there.
But it was redesigned and...
Yeah, they redesigned it for that size.
Okay.
The sewer closed elsewhere now.
It's fine. I just, it was a curious question. I'm sorry to get us diverted like that.
What is that name?
So, the recommendation is to approve that quick claim deed. Chair will entertain any discussion or motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Sam, you've got the next item, please.
This is approval of the eight-year working summer youth program contracts for $15,000. That's consistent with how many you can pass. And it's up for approval recommendation.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Chief Carter, you've got the next couple, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Per the request of Bartow County Emergency Management Director Johnny Payne and Georgia Homeland Security, Georgia Emergency Management Agency, they're in the process of redoing their mutual agreements across the state of Georgia. And we are here before you tonight with a new mutual agreement as requested by the state. To my understanding, this has already been approved by the county. It has been reviewed by legal. And this is a document that goes into effect at times of disaster for communities assisting each other.
Okay. Any questions?
Question, ma'am.
Go right ahead.
Chief, who takes the lead? If the disaster is more in the county, let's say a train wreck and some chemical problem, who takes the lead or in the city? Is it, would it be the commissioner or city manager, depending on where it is?
Home jurisdiction is the actual location of the incident. If it's an incident that occurred within the corporate limits for the city of Cartersville, then therefore, we would take responsibility. We would take the lead. The county may be assisting us by some...
As far as the incident, those like the ranking officer on the senior branch.
Yes. Yeah, there's protocols in place. At no time does anyone from outside of any jurisdiction go in and remove the authority or take away the control of the local. If that answers your question.
Yes, sir. It's local control, depends, it's county or city, but it stays local control.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Somebody is powerful.
Could be. Go ahead with the next item, please, Chief.
This is a budgeted request. This is the purchasing of the uniforms for the 12 new firefighters that will be coming onboard with us very shortly for the expansion of our operations and the opening of Station 4. You see one bid before you, one name before you, that it will be TNT Uniforms of Smyrna. They are currently the ones that have our annual bid that we do a once-a-year-per-fiscal-year process. So, this was not bid out to multiple vendors to maintain our current FY operation. We're requesting a total cost per firefighter of $9,6450 for a total amount of $11,574. This is a budgeted item. It is under budget, and this E-verify and all documentations are on file.
Questions or discussion on this item? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Bobby, come on. Tom, I'm just going to move your stuff to the end, so you just have to come up once, if that's all right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Back at the visioning session retreat we had, we just found out after contacting CSX that they had agreed to repair the rails on South Irwin at Cody J's and around the corner, Old Mill at Cody J's, and also on the Sugar Valley Crossing closest to Castle Road. Our original estimate, which depended on how much they raised the rails, was between $50,000 and $60,000. They raised the rails on Old Mill and South Irwin about a foot. Took two separate attempts to get the overlay smooth enough to where it wouldn't as bad as it was before. I think it's a lot better now. Bottom line, we ended up spending $110,050 versus the $50,000, $60,000 that we originally estimated. We got three great crossings now, I think, and splopped resurfacing, funded the overlays.
I agree with you that it's much better to drive over now. So, thank you. Any discussion? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Bobby? Come on, Ed.
Mayor, council, the first item is basically replacement of general inventory items for pipe fittings and accessories for the distribution collection office. We received bids from four different suppliers. The low bid was submitted by MSC Water Works in the amount of $10,577.70. We do have the E-Verify and Save documentation in hand. This will be paid for from the budget item for maintenance to meters and settings.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? If not, motion would be in order.
Make a motion to approve the replacement materials for water distribution and collection.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, second.
Oh.
Second.
How about a second? Thank you. Thank you, Connie. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for putting your blind faith in me. We just all went off the cliff together. Motion carries. Continue on, please, Ed.
The sewer line in East Johnson Street is in deteriorated condition and is in need of replacement. We designed a replacement project in-house. Bids were received from four different contractors. CNL Contractors of Dallas, Georgia submitted a low bid in the amount of $54,118.20. We do have the E-Verify and Save documentation in hand. This is a budgeted item, and we recommend approval to CNL Contractors in the amount of $54,118.20.
Okay. Any discussion? The motion would be in order.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Are there any contractors within Bartow County who do this work?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, there are, and they bid on this project. TJ Lyle and Company is in Bartow County, as well as CH Kirkpatrick. One thing I will note, a lot of CNL Contractors employees live here in Bartow County. So, we consider them a local firm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next one, Ed.
The sewer line in Ford Street, which connects to this line, is also in deteriorated condition. We designed a replacement project on that and received bids from four different contractors. CNL Contractors, again, received or submitted a low bid in the amount of $67,479.11. We do have the E-Verify and Save documentation in hand. This was a budgeted item, and we recommend approval.
Any questions on this item for Ford Street? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the bid from CNL Contractors.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on.
Well, during recent work, we found out that a section of existing sewer line on Irwin Street near Main Street has collapsed, and we have raw sewage seeping into the ground. Also, near there, we have a sewer line that passes under Legion Theater and the other buildings adjacent to it on Main Street. We would like to relocate this sewer out from under the building and to prevent having a stoppage flood sewage into the buildings. It involves installing approximately 450 feet of sewer line. CNL Contractors has agreed to perform this work for the unit prices they bid for the Johnson Street and Ford Street project. Using these unit prices, the total for this work comes out to $58,900. We recommend approval of this contract with CNL Contractors. We do have the E-Verify and Save documentation, and this will be paid for from the budget. One thing we'd like to note is that the bids for the Ford Street and the Johnson Street came in under what we had originally estimated and budgeted for those, and that we'll be able to add this project in and still be under the amount that we originally budgeted for those two projects.
Three for the price of two.
That's correct.
Very good. All right. Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You threw me off, but thank you for the conciseness of that, Ms. Hodge.
You're welcome.
Next item, please, Ed.
And the next item is basically replacement of inventory of fire hydrants. We received bids from four different suppliers. Kendall Municipal Supply submitted a little bid in the amount of $15,788.45. This is a budgeted item. We do have the E-Verify and Save documentation in hand. It will be paid for from the maintenance to fire hydrants account.
Make a motion to approve the low bid for hydrants.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. So, we put that all on autopilot. That's good. Thank you, Ed. All right, Tom, I guess you're going to give us the budget ordinance.
Which one you want me to do first? Just follow me.
You know what? I'm going to leave it up to you. What would you like to do first?
Let's go ahead and get these other two purchases out of the way first.
Okay.
I'm the mayor and council. The Recreation Department is in need of a small to mid-sized truck. Bid packages were sent out to five vendors, with only one vendor returning the bid information. Also, a new vendor was added to the list, and they chose not to bid on it when it got downtown, down to completing the E-Verify documentation. The only bid that I received back was from Wind Buick GMC, and they submitted a bid of $17,642.43. The vehicle that was quoted doesn't meet the specifications. All E-Verify documentation is in hand, and I recommend approval of this purchase from Wind GM for $17,642.43.
Okay.
Mayor, just a comment. This seems like a fair and a good bid. However, this council is concerned about the lack of additional bids, and we talked during the break.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think you did everything possible, including on your own time, dropping by several vendors to make sure they had received.
Yes, ma'am.
The package and so forth. So, I feel good about that. Still don't understand, in this economic time, why we would not be receiving more bids.
I was hoping to receive more. Like I said, I even increased the number of vendors by one, and still didn't get anything but one response back.
But I feel confident, Mayor, that we're doing all that we can do and should do.
Absolutely. I agree.
Just a comment.
Would you like to follow that up with a motion?
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to. Make a motion to approve the truck for the Recreation Department.
And I'd be willing to second that.
Thank you to you both. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And the second item I have is for these, Carfield Bartow County Library has submitted a second request for reimbursement from the Impact Fund in the amount of $13,580.11. If this is indeed approved, the fiscal year 2012 impact fee budget will need to be amended, and this amendment can be done at the end of the fiscal year with all the other adjustments. It will bring the library portion of the impact fee down to a zero balance, and the library personnel are aware of this fact. I've gone over it with them a couple of times. The last time, the reimbursement request for the library was dated 3/15/2012, and that was for $15,008,1334, and was approved. And I recommend the approval of this current library request for reimbursement of $13,580.11 from the Impact Fee Fund.
Okay. Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tom.
And now, we'll get on to the budget presentation. This is our first reading of the budget ordinance. The budget is in a balanced budget. It did decrease 12,623,255 from the fiscal year 2012 budget, and this equates out to about 8 percent decrease. It doesn't include no insurance, I'm sorry, no salary adjustments, no city property tax increases. It does include Cartersville School System funds, no increase staff, and a small increase in the water and sewer rate structure. Positives of the balanced budget are no city property tax increase. It continues our five-year capital plan. It does increase, like I said earlier, a small water and sewer rate increase, and it does have some debt issuance for SPLOPS funded for the pool upgrades. Some of the major changes from our meeting on the 10th of May include the general fund decreasing by $890,000. This is due to lower estimates for the school system revenues and appropriations. If you remember, our, excuse me, our bid money used to be as part of the general fund. We have created a new special revenue fund for that. And the third item is the electric fund decreased an additional $647,000. I'm sorry, not additional, but overall, from the 10th meeting. This is due to lower revenue estimates. And as a side note, we have included some impact fees coming from the Impact Fee Fund to fund, to help offset some of the costs for the two fire trucks that were purchased, and also the recreational trail that we have in the budget. The general fund and special revenue funds have decreased 3.9 percent. Electric fund decreased, I'm sorry, increased 2.3 percent. Fiber optics fund decreased 7 percent. Gas fund decreased 19.8 percent. Solid waste fund decreased 7.4 percent. Stormwater increased 12 percent. Water and sewer increased 8.7 percent. Internal service fund, which is our garage fund, increased 16.9 percent. SPLOPS 2003 increased, I'm sorry, decreased 45, 45 percent, and SPLOPS 2007 decreased 45.7 percent for an overall decrease of 8 percent. Just to talk about the budget comparison by type, personnel increased $29,000. Operating decreased 2.1 million dollars. Purchases of commodities decreased 5.6 million dollars. School board appropriations increased 1.5 million dollars. Business Improvement District Tax Fund increased $925. Debt service increased $15,000. Capital increased, sorry, decreased 6.6 million dollars, and the transfer to general fund You can see this is a comparison, bar graph comparison of the budget for the last seven years. You can see as in 2009, we were at a high of $169.5 million. It's decreased over the years, and finally, in 2013, it ends up at $145,000.1. And our staffing levels over the last several years, we've topped out at 367 employees in 2009, decreased in 2010 and '11, and increased 2012 and 2013. The increase in 2012 was due to the 12 firefighters that have been put off on hold until early or late in July this year. And the city-county cooperation, we're funding, helping fund the grant writers that we, I'll just talk about, without太多的thought. Anyway, we basically are helping to fund the grant writers, keeping the America Beautiful program going. We're sharing the cost of the city-county mapping and phone system, and we're sharing the cost of the economic development.
Tom?
Yes?
One question on that last one. When we share economic development costs, is it 50/50?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
The outside agency funding, total requested this year from those agencies was $793,700. In our last budget workshop meeting, the council left it at the same rate of last year, $784,200, and that is incorporated into the budget.
And one more thing. Sam, when we look at that last one, when we're talking about downtown development and how that's going to change?
Yeah.
That's going to end up increasing personnel cost and removing the $85,000 that we show giving directly to them, correct?
Good. I don't know what the bottom line on it's going to be yet.
Right.
And I don't, I'm not sure yet either if the county will participate in that, if we bring it in the house.
If the county will?
Well, the county supports, yeah.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
So, I'm not sure on that. Right now, we're concentrating on getting the exec hired and then working through those issues with the DDA.
Okay.
This slide represents a residential water sewage and total rate comparison. You'll see the first two on the far left-hand side. The first one is the city of Cartersville's current rates. The second one is the city of Cartersville proposed rate increase. And you can see that they are both at this current time, and with the proposed increase, we are still, we'll still be below all the surrounding counties. Electric rates, again, were below our competition, the black being us and the red being the competition. This is based on 2011 information, but we will still, my understanding is we will still be below competition. And the gas provider, our gas system is at $1.29, I'm sorry, $1.29 per therm versus the competition, who are arranged from $1.58 per therm up to $1.69 per therm. And that's my presentation for the budget.
Okay. That is the first reading of this budget ordinance for 1213 fiscal year. Any questions or discussion at this point?
Mayor, may I make a comment if there's not a question? I don't want the public to ever think we're just not asking questions at this point. The truth of the matter is, this started about March or April, and a lot of things go, Mr. Grove, to you, Mr. Reinhardt, Mr. Porter. It's a tough, tight budget. We knew it would be in March and April. We see it is right now. But from my perspective, Sam, you and I have talked about this, it's a tough time for all cities, but I think we have really been careful over the years, and I'm proud of what we're able to hang on to and do. So...
Thank you. I think staff has done a great job of putting this together. We've been able to balance it, and we've been able to include a list of initiatives that council outlined as their goals, chief among those being extension of electric and fiber to our corporate business park, and done that within a budget where we've, not at this point, but borrowed money for it. There are a number of other things that you all outlined in February that are included in there, too. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the first reading of the budget ordinance? There is none? I'll ask Mr. Reinhardt to continue on to the water and sewer proposed rate increase.
Yes, thank you very much. This is our first reading of the ordinance to the utility regarding the water and sewer rates. This proposal has a 5 percent increase in the water and sewer rates. It's needed to keep the water system and sewer system going. It is due to increased operational and maintenance costs. It will add approximately $1.50 per month for average residential customers. It will add approximately $1.50 per month for average residential customers based on 7,500 gallons consumed. Again, as I said earlier, we will remain one of the lowest rates in the surrounding area, and it is not associated with a decrease in capacity fees, as I have been asked several times in the last couple of weeks. And then one more, one more time, we've got, we have a slide there showing the proposed rate and our current rate and how we are, and we will remain below the surrounding areas.
Any questions or discussions at this point? This, once again, is the first reading of the amendment to the utility ordinance regarding water and sewer rates.
Thank you.
To none. Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Tom, for the multimedia work there. Uh, is there any other issues that needs to come before council this evening?
Look, I gotta go back and fix that.
Gotta go back and fix what?
When the power went off, we were dealing with the amendment to...
Nah. Did we do that?
The special application...
Amendment to special use.
I'm gonna go back and, I've gotta fix that. I didn't make that motion with the, um...
Conditions.
Approval, depending upon conditions being met.
There was no vote on that?
No, we didn't redo it. The power went out before we did it.
You're right.
Didn't Mr. Archer say we need to add the conditions to that, and then we approved it with condition?
You amended that power, started to amend the power went out.
All right, well, just, it's not gonna hurt us to do it twice, in the case that we didn't, but y'all saying we didn't, which I believe you.
She said we didn't vote on the amendment.
We didn't vote on the, okay, well, why don't you go ahead and make, chair will entertain a motion relative to item number SU12-02.
Motion to approve the conditions that the fire department has required.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for your help tonight. It was great. Uh, once again, anything else that needs to come before council this evening?
Gentlemen, welcome to the meeting. I was under the impression that you had something for the, for the, you didn't, oh, you just visited? Okay. Deadhead.
Very good. Uh, would like to just, uh, mention that happened a couple of weeks ago. I was out of town, but Robert Ed Hicks, who spent an awful lot of time on our planning commission and also a, a large contributor, uh, in his time and talent to the Carlsville baseball, uh, Little League program, uh, passed away after an accident, and we wish, uh, his family well. His former council member as well, yeah. So, um, we, uh, we just wanted to recognize him for his efforts and his contributions to making this city a wonderful place.
Yes, sir.
And with that being said, chair will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll offer that motion.
Adjourn.
Shut up.
Didn't get it in the room.
There we say.